We'll call the meeting to order with the pledge of allegiance, Ms. Wilds. Would you like to start?
I'd be happy to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I didn't see you come in. Wonderful you.
Go ahead.
Jackie, would you like to give the real call?
Mr. Boyce.
Here.
Mr. Hampton.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Jensen. Mr. O'Connor.
Present.
Ms. Rowland.
Present.
Mr. Taylor. Ms. Wilds.
Present.
Mr. Ayer.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Approval of the minutes for the February twenty-seventh meeting in two thousand eighteen.
Still moved?
Second.
All those that were present. Six with one abstention. Five with two abstention. Approval of the agenda.
Mr. President.
Mr. Boyce.
I'd like to make a motion that we move miscellaneous items number one and number two, excuse me, up and just under the approval of claims before the previously discussed ordinances and approve the rest of the agenda as written.
Second.
We have a motion of second to amend the agenda, moving miscellaneous number one and two up to underneath approval of claims. All those in favor? Seven zero. Additional comments by citizens who are present? I have none at this time. Mayors report to council.
Thank you very much and good evening. Been a little busy with a lot of things going on. On the twenty-eighth, the chamber had their normal lunch, but we did listen to state representative candidates. I thought our counselor did a great job, little plug, but again, there are four candidates for that job. And tomorrow Kathy will be Kathy's last day serving us as a state rep after twenty-six years, Kathy Richardson. So we have to thank her for all of those years of service. Sherry Faust, who did retire from our Parks Department, been there over twenty years, was there. We had an open house on Sunday for Elsie Olvey, O-L-V-E-Y. Mrs. Olvey was a volunteer very much at Riverview and just a tricap, but just a lot of organizations within the city. And her husband was a mayor for a short time, but nonetheless, the mayor of the city of Noblesville, pictures on the mayor's wall out there. But delightful, she is a hundred. I wish I looked that good when I was eighty, let alone a hundred. Anyway, I think Mary Sue was involved in setting that up, and so it was a very nice celebration. Also, the other day, we had a ribbon cutting for the Hamilton County Jail complex, solar panels, ninety-three hundred, I believe, saving millions of dollars over a period of time. And certainly, they should be committed for doing that. Today, from five to seven, we had an open house and talking about the downtown streetscape project that we have. We've got a lot of input already. This gave, again, more folks from our community to give input about the future and to really have a wow factor as you come in to the city of Noblesville and the downtown district. Next week, the eighteenth through the twenty-fourth is severe weather preparedness week. Just don't be alarmed if there's a big alarm and whatever. We are having a drill here at City Hall within the city. We have, I have decided to form a mayor's youth council. It's something, frankly, that I've had on my mind and just haven't, have not done it. But we've got four young men. That's going to be a balanced council. See, I saw the look, Ms. Wilds. But it happens to be four young men that are excited to get that started. We went a week ago Saturday to Indiana University with youth groups from all over the state. And those four gentlemen, three gentlemen, were there. A very impressive group, very impressive young group of students as well. And then the annual Easter egg hunt is the twenty-fourth with a pancake breakfast at Forest Park. And if we all recall and remember that, get there early. You don't have to stay long, but that's about a thirty-second run for eggs, as we all know. But it's really fun to watch the young ones go after those eggs. So that's all I have. Do you have any questions of me? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council committee reports.
President, I have one.
Mr. Hampton.
From March second's Roads Committee, Greg O'Connor and myself and others were there. Just some of the highlights, or a lot of topics, but some of the highlights. Pleasant Street, the corridor, the preliminary layouts and design are progressing. Funding from the state and federal sources is still being explored. Reports and the frequently asked questions will be posted on the Internet soon with a public meeting to follow. Discussions are ongoing concerning minimizing the impact for right-of-way. Also, Midland Trace Trail, tree clearing for phase two between Willow View Road and Hazel Dell Road is complete. One parcel of right-of-way still needs to be acquired between Willow View Road and Cherry Tree Road. Riverwalk. Design is complete for an additional small phase to be constructed from Division Street to Southside Park. Applicants for permits from the Indiana Department of Natural Resources for construction in a floodway are in progress, and the work is dependent on issuance of the permits, but should be done this summer. Levy Trail, design work is complete and has been submitted to the Hamilton County Parks Department and Citizens Energy Group for final review and approval. Work will begin soon on that. Another one, Oleo Road and Hundred and Forty-Sixth Street. Surveying is ongoing for the improvements to Oleo Road north of Tegler Drive and Hundred and Forty-Sixth Street between Bergen Boulevard and Oleo Road. Construction is expected in two thousand nineteen. So some of the highlights from the March second Roads Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Hampton. Any other committee reports? Mr. O'Connor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance Committee met March eighth. Some of the highlights from that meeting, our own controller, Mr. Spalding, testified at the State House on House Bill eleven oh four, which we talked about quite a bit with respect to allocation of local income tax, which is currently tied to property tax, and I won't get into all the weeds of those imaginations as to how the allocations are made. But the Cliff Notes version is Carmel is collecting a much higher amount of local income tax than the rest of the cities in Hamilton County. Mayor Fadness decided he was going to see if he could make some changes there. So I'm not sure what the resolution of HB eleven oh four has been, but the fact is, if a freeze were put in place for five years, Noblesville would collect another five to six million dollars in local income tax. And it's more of an equity issue than it is anything else. I don't think this is meant to be a frontal attack on Carmel, but it's really more of a situation where the state has got these funding formulas set up tied to property tax, and frankly, that's probably not appropriate in today's day and age. So there's going to have to be some changes made to that. And I didn't check to see what has happened with that bill as far as session is concerned, and that ends tomorrow, as the mayor pointed out. So probably more news later on that, but that would certainly be helpful for us from a revenue standpoint. Talked about some cash funding for fire equipment that we hereby use lease purchasing, and I think Jeff has decided that using some cash may be more appropriate there, which I think the committee was amenable to. There's some other ordinances that will be coming forward. I won't read all those for you. I think most of these we've talked about historically. We're cleaning up some cash funds that were tied to lease purchase. Jeff is working on that and continues to work tirelessly on charts of accounts. So I'm hopeful that maybe by the end of the year, Jeff can focus his attention on more strategic issues, but that's a high, that's a high priority for him to get through that. And the claims come to you with a favorable recommendation.
Mr. O'Connor.
Welcome.
Ms. Wilds.
I would just like to clarify something Mr. O'Connor said about this local income tax. It's not that there's going to be an increase in that amount, it's that the pot that's already there will be more equally distributed based upon the population within the county. Currently, it's more swayed towards Carmel versus the rest of the community. Not an increase, it's just a more fair distribution.
Well, hopefully, the State House will agree with that.
Exactly.
We shall see.
Thank you. Real quick, any other council committee reports? Real quick, I would like to mention that Hamilton County Leadership Academy last Saturday put together a forum that they invited Noblesville City Council, Fishers Council, Westfield, Carmel, Sheridan, Cicero Town Councils. I don't know if anybody's there from Arcadia or not, but it was a real good forum and it had a lot of tough topics. Went on for about three hours. Mr. Hampton, Ms. Wilds, Mr. O'Connor, Mr. Jensen, myself attended. The topics, affordable housing, mass transit, and opioid crisis. So it's pretty tough to solve those in three hours, but we did have a lot of good discussion, and I appreciate them doing that. They did that about two years ago, too. I think Ms. Rowland was at the one two years ago. But hopefully, they do it again in another two years or even another year. With that, I think we have a recommendation on approval of claims.
And I will make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the claims? Okay, miscellaneous item number one. Council will consider Resolution RC three dash eighteen a preliminary resolution designating an economic revitalization area for SMC Corporation of America and establishing a public hearing real property. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Ayer, and council members. First of all, in reference to the next two agenda items, I'd like to point out that the resolutions that you all received previously talk about SMC Corporation of America, real property capital investment, that it was forty-nine million dollars. If approval happens tonight, I want you to know that the actual real property investment will be forty-nine million, eight hundred thousand dollars. And the resolutions that Jackie has that contain the signature pages, they reflect the correct amount.
Johnson, would you want to go ahead and I'll make a, I'll present miscellaneous number two, and you can do the presentation of both at the same time.
I can do that, but I did want to ask your permission of something of council, that before I do my agenda items, I would request that SMC Corporation representatives in the audience, I'd like to introduce them as well as allow them to do a presentation to you of an overview of their project, if that's okay.
That's fine. Let me go ahead and introduce miscellaneous number two, and then we'll do that. Council will consider RC dash four dash one eight a preliminary resolution designating an economic revitalization area for SMC Corporation of America and establishing a public hearing regarding personal property.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
In the audience tonight from SMC Corporation of America, I'll just have you wave, Senior Vice President Kelly Stacy, Director of Production Chad Bosler, Manager of Facilities Chip Gleason, Plant Manager Chris Abriani, did I get that right? Thanks. And Marketing Director John Halverson. And also in the audience tonight, representing them are their site consultants, Katie Culp, who's President of KSM Location Advisors, and also Heather Judy, Director of Incentives Compliance from KSM. Tonight, though, presenting will be Chad Bosler and Katie Culp, if you guys want to come on up.
Katie Culp and I am with Kath Safer and Miller, my partner there, and President of KSM Location Advisors. Our address is eight hundred East Ninety-Sixth Street, Suite five hundred, Indianapolis, Indiana. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chad Bosler, the Director of Production for SMC Corporation, located at ten one hundred SMC Boulevard, Noblesville, Indiana, four six zero six zero. Give you a little bit of background about SMC Corporation. I think I presented many times in front of you before, but give you a little update. SMC Corporation of America is the U.S. subsidiary of SMC Corporation based in Japan. We are the global leader in pneumatic technology, and they're based, our guiding principles, on contributing to automation labor savings in the industry. We've got a global market share of thirty-five percent. We have a North American market share of twenty-four percent. We currently have subsidiaries set up in fifty-three countries. Production facilities are located in twenty-nine countries, and we've got a sales network that extends through eighty-one countries. We moved to Noblesville, if everyone remembers, in two thousand nine, to a million-square-foot facility, and when we moved, we moved with four hundred and twenty-five employees. We outgrew that space, very fortunate to outgrow that space, and with the support of Noblesville, we did an expansion in two thousand twelve. We added six hundred thousand square feet, and we're up to just under a thousand employees at our campus here in Noblesville. In addition to our facility in Noblesville, we have thirty-three sales branches throughout the United States and Canada. We're adding an additional three sales branches this year. We have six hundred and fifty sales associates, SMC sales associates across the United States and Canada, and five hundred and ninety-two distributor locations, stocking locations throughout the United States as well. Currently, we are sixty-five percent of our business is through indirect channels, through distributors, through your Amazon dot-coms and other entities, and thirty-five percent of that sales volume in the United States and Canada are direct sales to SMC. Sure. From a community involvement standpoint, we obviously like to give back to the community. One way is providing experience for the future workforce of Indiana. We donate raw materials. We've donated CNC equipment, other products to areas of schools. We also provide a number of internships, classroom training, facility tours, summer employment, other career development opportunities as well. Some of the schools and the organizations that benefit from SMC's involvement in the community include Fisher's High School, Noblesville High School, Hamilton Southeastern, the local Ivy Tech here, Purdue University, the new Polytechnic University in Anderson, Purdue University, Rose Holman, Conexus of Indiana, and First Robotics. And we continue to expand that as well, as you know. One in five jobs in the state of Indiana are tied to manufacturing. We're trying to get, obviously, young students interested in the technology field, plus to show them that in the manufacturing sector, there's new technologies. It's a clean environment with plenty of room for growth as well. Go ahead. Yeah, please.
All right. Hi, I'm Katie Culp. It's so nice to be before you again this evening, and I'm really excited to be here with SMC Corporation. I always remember how long they've been here, because I was super pregnant with my first born, who just turned eleven years old. So it's really exciting to see all that they have encompassed and how they've grown and become such an important part of this community. And so we have a really exciting opportunity before us this evening. We're here before you with a preliminary resolution. I know there's been some press this afternoon. SMC is still in the process of making a location decision. Everybody in Noblesville, from the council to the Economic Development Committee that we met with, to the mayor and deputy mayor, and of course Judy Johnson and Amy and her staff, to the Planning Department, I mean, everybody has been so welcoming and very helpful, but of course, there are still a lot of issues to work through, including some at the state level. So we're really excited to be here before you this evening. I apologize, I'm losing my voice, so I sound a little funky, but so we're here to talk about what this project's scope would look like. We are seeking your preliminary support with this resolution. If things go well and we continue to resolve some of these other extraneous details, we would hope to appear before you, and again, in two weeks with a final resolution. And at that point, your attorney, Mr. Howard, I'm sure will rake us over the coals with all sorts of project agreement details if past proves to continue itself. But you're very familiar with the organization. They currently have, it says one point five million, is that correct?
One point six million.
Yeah, one point six million square feet under roof right now. And so the opportunity before us would be that the manufacturing facility in their current building would double and kind of take over the spaces currently being utilized by distribution space, and then there would be a new one million square foot distribution facility that would be constructed. There'd kind of be job growth in both areas, but obviously primarily focused on the distribution area. There'd be significant new investment in equipment to support the expanded manufacturing operations. There'd be job growth as well. So I don't know, is there anything you want to add to that piece of it?
The total land area, three hundred and forty-two acres. When we moved to Noblesville in two thousand nine, we purchased a hundred acres originally in two thousand eight. We've been acquiring surrounding property as time goes by. We never want to be in a landlocked situation like we were on the east side of Indianapolis, so that investment has taken place over time. That's how we acquired the additional acreage that have come up for sale over a period of five to six years.
And that's typical for SMC. If you look at their operations across the world, the acquisition of land is not necessarily a trigger that, you know, it's just something that the SMC of Japan has liked to own land and have its options open and available near large facilities like this. And as you can see in the slides, I mean, this is a huge, significant operation, not just in physical size, but the capital investment that even with incentives that have previously existed, city of Noblesville is still getting a huge economic impact, which we'll talk about a little bit later, in terms of not only direct tax dollars, but the expanded economic impact associated with the project. One thing I did want to mention, because we pulled this and their HR director was nice enough to provide it, we asked to look at, of these almost a thousand jobs that are currently located here, what percentage are Hamilton County residents and what percentage specifically are Noblesville residents? Earlier in the council meeting, there was some local option income tax discussion mentioned, and this, of course, is not only important to know about the impact to your community, but there's a dollar value associated with it when there are employees who live here locally, whether that be in the city of Noblesville or the county at large. One question that we've gotten, and certainly the city staff and administration have done their diligence in pressing us on, is, okay, you do own some ground here adjacent to your property, how competitive is this project? And one of the things, and Chad may want to say a word or two, but the company's faced with is, you know, you've got a very large facility here, and there are a lot of operational decisions. Do you continue to invest in one location, kind of put all your eggs in one basket, or do you kind of spread and diversify? And their work, I mean, you know, SMC's all over the world, but in terms of SMC North America, they have just a huge platform across the country. And so there are a lot of opportunities that you might better serve some of the clients that are located a little further away from the center of the U.S.
Yeah, and this map represents the five hundred and ninety-two distributor stocking locations throughout the United States and Canada. If we looked at current stocking that these distributors carry, they're carrying roughly seventy-five million dollars worth of SMC goods. In our Noblesville distribution facility, we're probably carrying two hundred and fifty million dollars worth of goods.
So the project, I kind of touched on it earlier. The idea would be to double the manufacturing, to double the distribution. That requires a little bit of moving around and would require the construction of a new million-square-foot distribution center. That would require equipment located there, and then to expand the manufacturing in the existing building, that would be a significant new investment in equipment. We expect, it's always difficult with the crystal ball, and having worked with SMC for the eleven years, I've seen them be very conservative in their job creation projections and kick it out of the park every time.
Excuse me a hard time.
It's hard, though, to look in the crystal ball, I get it. So at this point, we're projecting two hundred and fifty jobs over a ten-year period. I think the resolutions before you may reflect a smaller number, and the reason for that is actually to the benefit of Noblesville. So not to get too much in the weeds, but you've got these forms that have to be filled out that have a start date and an end date. And so if we extend out the end date for the job creation and reflect the two hundred and fifty jobs, that also expands the window that investment gets abated. And so instead of, you know, over a three- to five-year window, or all of a sudden, any replacement equipment that's made in year six, seven, eight, that would be subject to an abatement. So at first blush, I know it creates some questions like, oh, are you really making a smaller commitment? It's not that SMC is making a public commitment over a ten-year period, but you probably don't want a ten-year period of investment window to be subject to full ten-year tax payment. So that is sort of the reason, but you can see the breakdown of the job creation and the types of skills that are needed. And certainly, even with the conservative forecast, I mean, two hundred and fifty jobs is a big deal. And certainly, to, even with the conservative forecast, I mean, 250 jobs is a big deal for Noblesville, I know, but also in the state of Indiana. And we're still in discussions with the state about what their participation looks like. Do you want to talk maybe a little bit about?
Yeah, absolutely. If the project were to be approved, the, the ideas, our current building with the MEPs, the mechanicals, the electricals, and the plumbing, and all the infrastructure that are in place, really have the foundation to expand the manufacturing. And when you look at, from an operations standpoint, moving a distribution center compared to moving 400 machines, 250, which is CNC, raw materials, it really makes sense tied to keeping manufacturing in place, expanding that operation, and then building a new distribution center. So our plan, you can see our existing building that shows in Lot 1, the 1.6 million-square-foot facility. Lot 3, if you remember, was the SMC dormitory that we're using to train our newest sales associates at our corporate headquarters prior to putting them out in the field. And then Lot 2 would be the new proposed facility in, in Noblesville. And what you're looking at is a million-square-foot distribution facility that will have a 200-foot skywalk between the two facilities, two facilities, so we can link the two facilities together for traffic and product moving back and forth. And then you can see the other surrounding lots that we're working with the city on the parcels and the zoning with as well, so we don't have to continue to come in front of you to look at future zoning for other adventures in, in business.
Excellent, thank you. This is just, I mean, it's preliminary rendering, so you know things will change, and we've been working very closely with your amazing planning department and just trying to work through some of these details, but this is an initial rendering of what the building may look like, so certainly not the type of distribution center you might find in perhaps the western suburbs of Indianapolis or something. It's got some, you know, architectural interest to it. And then we, we wanted to get to, and something that the city has requested, when we've worked on some of these big projects, is we run at Katz, Eppert, and Miller an economic impact model that kind of takes a look at not only the direct benefit, which is very tangible, where we base on existing tax rates, which of course typically don't shrink and tend to maybe go up over time, so this number could be even larger, that even net the abatement, but if you add the local income taxes, we've got about a $13 million benefit to the city. If you want to NPV that, of course, you don't always have to take assumptions on discount rates, but that's still $8 million. We, when we, we take a look at the multiplier effect, like the folks who hit, you know, run some errands on the way to or from work, this is a model that is pretty conservative and uses some multipliers from Purdue University, and we're at about a $13 million impact for that as well, so that's in addition. The break-even point, this is a, a model that the state of Indiana runs, and I know that Ms. Johnson relies very heavily on with some of these big projects. It shows a break-even in year two. We talk about the 250 jobs that are projected to be created. When you take a multiplier effect, some of the ripple effect of some of these jobs and ancillary positions that are created to create support services, whether that be retail or office or other functions, it'd be 341 by 2028. So the, the bottom line of all this, that's a lot of numbers, and you can always run your calculations, but from our perspective, we see this as a really good opportunity for Noblesville, certainly a potentially really good opportunity for SMC. It's been a great, long history together and partnership, and so we would respectfully request your support at this preliminary action for property tax payment, which will make this more economically feasible so that all the approvals and that type of thing can be obtained. And then if things go well, we would appear, I would appear before you again in a couple of weeks. So that is that. Happy to be quiet now and answer any questions you may have.
President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I just have two, Katie. When you did the NPV discount, did you do that over 10 years?
Where did I go? We took that out, the term we took, and this is something that the IEDC has taken, it's kind of their cookie cutter, goes out through 2032, so it does go out for a period of time.
Term, oh. I was trying to figure out if the asterisk tied back. Okay, thanks.
Right, yeah.
And you're looking for state support on, from the IEDC?
That's correct. We have a preliminary offer from them. We're working through some of the details associated with the project. There may be some infrastructure costs involved, so we're just kind of having conversations with them. They've been very supportive, as has Duke Energy. They have some economic incentive programs as well. It's just none of those have been finalized yet, and we wanted to, you know, all of this, we're trying to kind of operate in parallel so we can move down the path in a, in a coordinated effort.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll do the formal portion of this now. Before you tonight, we're asking for your approval of the adoption of a preliminary resolution, RC 318, that establishes an economic revitalization area on part of the property located north of 146th Street and immediately west of Howe Road, as shown by our presenters previously. SMC Corporation of America is requesting that you preliminarily approve a 10-year declining tax phase-in on a new 1 million-square-foot manufacturing and distribution facility with a capital investment of $49,800,000. Once again, I'll repeat that their current employee count is 954, and they are promising to hire 92 new employees. That would be the first request for approval for that resolution.
Want to have any questions, Ms. Johnson? We do need to open a public hearing on RC-3-18. No?
Next, next item.
And it is for the Capital Improvement Fund. The public hearing on these two items will be, I'm sure, next meeting.
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we approve Resolution RC-3-18.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve Resolution RC-3-18. All those in a favor? Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. The next agenda item requests your approval of the adoption of a preliminary resolution, RC 418, that establishes an economic revitalization area for both the three parcels of land located north of 146th Street and immediately west of Howe Road, which will be the location of the new project, and the land and buildings north of SMC Boulevard presently known as 10100 SMC Boulevard, which is the existing facility. The preliminary request being made by SMC Corporation of America is for a 10-year, 80% annual tax savings on a capital investment of $18 million of new personal property. And as I mentioned earlier, there are the 92 new jobs that would go in either facility.
Any questions for Ms. Johnson?
President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I'd make a motion that we approve Resolution RC-4-18. Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve Resolution RC-4-18. All those in favor? Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you very much. I did want to mention one other thing, because they did point out how they're good corporate citizens with all of the workforce issues that they participate in, but I also do want to point out that they also sponsor a lot of our parks programs and other things, so they're very, very philanthropic with their corporate giving to the city of Noblesville. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate you being here. With that, we will go to previously discussed ordinances. Council Consider Ordinance 0302-18, an ordinance to reestablish cumulative fund tax rate. Mr. Spalding.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, members of the council, this is, my name is Jeff Spalding, City Controller, and the ordinance that you have before you, again, second time you've heard it, so, you know, I can go into as much or as limited detail as you would like. The essence of this basically is with a bit of the tortured state law that is around the establishment of cumulative capital improvement fund tax rates, in essence, what this ordinance does and you're required to do by law is if you want to keep the tax rate for cumulative capital improvement fund at the level that you've approved in the past, you actually have to take an action as if you're re-establishing the tax rate, although the tax, you know, there, there is already a tax rate in place, but the ordinance requires you to re-establish the tax rate as if you're, you know, establishing a, a new rate for the fund. And you go through all of that process as you would normally do as if you were establishing a new rate for the fund, but in this case, the council's already established a rate of 5 cents per $100 of assessed value, established that most recently in 2014. The council hasn't taken any action on that since 2014, so by consequence of this arcane state law, the tax rate gets reduced every year unless you take this action. And as we discussed at the previous meeting, the, the consequence of that is somewhat interesting, a little counterintuitive, but not only does it result in a reduction of planned revenue below what was budgeted, but also the, the city, as was referenced earlier by the local income tax formula, it results in the, the city receiving a lower share of the allocation of the income tax as well, which was the issue being discussed in House Bill 1104. So with that, this ordinance just reestablishes the rate at 5, 5 cents per $100 assessed value, which is also what you approved in the 2018 budget. So it really doesn't change much, other than it's restating the will of the council, so, from previous actions.
Any questions for Mr. Spalding?
Mr. President, just one, maybe it's a point of clarification, but this would go into effect in 19, correct?
Correct.
Any other questions? This would be a roll call vote, Ms. Thompson? I'm sorry, we do need to open the public.
There you go.
It's been a while since I've done this. Thank you. With that, we need to open the public hearing.
Mr. President.
Mr. Boyce.
Seeing no public coming forward to discuss ordinance number 0302-18 during this public hearing, I would make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing on ordinance 0302-18. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve 03, ordinance 03-02-18 as presented.
Second.
Ms. Thompson, roll call vote.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Rowland.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Air.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is a previously discussed item, 54-11-17. Council Consider Ordinance 54-11-17, an ordinance rezoning property from R2 to R3 for approximately 21 acres at 2233 Sheridan Road, as amended. Ms. Yeldon?
I'm trying to change up here just a second. Yeah.
You want to add both of them? Okay, we'll do both of them at the same time. Council Consider Ordinance 55-11-17, an ordinance rezoning property from R3 to R3 PD, an adoption of a preliminary development plan, an ordinance for approximately 21 acres at 2233 Sheridan Road, as amended. Ms. Yeldon?
Okay. Well, I wanted to get the other machine to work here, but since I'm not going to do that right off, I guess we'll just proceed. As you may recall, this item was before you a while back and has been continued. It's located approximately 2,300 feet west of Mill Creek Road on the south side of State Route 38. It formerly was used as an agricultural site with a homestead. In 2007, there was a PD adopted for this particular project for a construction of a church and a 22-lot subdivision. In 2017, the current owners filed a use variance for the farm, for a barn being constructed prior to the construction of a residence and the housing of farm animals, which was denied by the Board of Zoning Appeals. This is an infill project for approximately 21 acres, which is surrounded by other residential, other residential uses. Those other subdivisions include Settlers Mill, Stone Harbor, Harbor Manor, Mill Creek, and across State Route 38 is Morris Point. This property has approximately 5.7 acres of land that's located in the floodplain or is encumbered by a pipeline. There's approximately 204 acres of brightaway within this development. There's 10 and a half acres of open space in this development. So once you take out, I'm going to say, a lot of those things that we don't count, there's approximately 11.5 acres of developable area. Surrounding zonings, again, in this area include R2 for Settlers Mill, Mill Creek is R1. Across the street, we do have an R1 PD. Morris Point is zoned R2, and Stone Harbor R4, and Stone Harbor Horizontal Property Regime is zoned R5. There is a single road that leads into this property that does end in a cul-de-sac. There would be a connection to the adjacent subdivision of Settlers Mill through connecting Cromarty Circle. The fire marshal did note that maintaining a second access to the site would be beneficial for, I'm going to say, emergency equipment, should something be blocked there on State Route 38. A preliminary traffic analysis has been done by A&amp;F Engineering. Since the last meeting with the council, the applicant has made contact with NDOT. NDOT has been out and adjusted the green light for, I'm going to say, Greta Green Drive and South Harbor Drive at State Route 38. They've increased those green light times, basically at that traffic signal. The developer has increased landscaping along State Route 38 for the two lots that basically you see a side view of those lots to minimize any rear views of traveling, of traveling cars. The homes are to be constructed by Fisher Homes, and the elevations were approved by ARB. There were four waivers that were being sought for this particular development. The comprehensive master plan does indicate this area as being mixed residential, single-family, which would incorporate a range of housing options and a variety of single-family housing types. I have also basically did a little bit of, I'm going to say, background work on some of the subdivisions in the area that basically have been recently approved. I'll start with Wood Hollow, which basically is at Hazel Del Road, south of, between 169th and 161st Street. That was a, a PD that was adopted back in December of 2016. It contained 17 acres, proposed for 132 lots. We did approve its first section of approximately 65 lots in December of 2017. And to date, we have issued two model home permits, and there is an application on file for an actual, an actual building permit for a residence in that subdivision. Cranbrook, which is located at Moon Town Road and State Route 32, was adopted in November of 2016. It's 60 acres, it's 86 lots. Right now, no sections of, or subdivision sections have been approved, so there have been no building permits issued for this particular subdivision. Pebblebrook Villas, which is located a, a little farther north, along Moon Town Road there, again, was for 30 acres. It was attached, single-family. Again, the number of buildings... Again, the number of building permits issued to date has been zero. Havenwood, which is basically at Hinkle Road, north of, yes, north of State Route 38, basically was approved in April of 2017. It has 97 acres total, 181 lots. We have approved just recently, in the last couple of weeks, Section 1, and we have, at to date, issued zero building permits. The closest one to this area is the Timbers, which was given approval back in March of 2017. It contained 197, 195 lots, 300, I'm, 195 acres and 310 lots. To date, nothing has been submitted as far as moving on, I'm going to say, to the second phase of that development by presenting us with construction plans. Each one of those developments, the closest development to this particular subdivision, Sagewood, is basically roughly within a mile, a mile ring between a mile and a two-mile ring. Cranbrook, Pebblebrook are basically at the two-mile ring level, and Wood Hollow and Havenwood basically extend out beyond the two-mile ring, but are less than three miles away from this proposed development. Again, it is for a 28-lot subdivision. Again, planning staff did recommend approval of this project because it does meet several objectives and goals of the comp plan. However, it was sent to the council from the Planning Commission with an 8-1 do-not-adopt vote. And with that, I will ask if you have any questions.
Questions for Ms. Yelton? Mr. Johnson?
I just lost my battery power on my laptop here, but I was looking at the map and the layout of the lots and stuff. And one of the things that I had noticed and I thought might be a reasonable thing to ask of the developer was, there was one lot, I want to say it might be 17 possibly, as you turn into that circle, that the side of that lot goes right up against the subdivision. Is it 24 or 17? Do you have it there?
Yeah, I assume you're talking about 17, which is down at the very end.
There you go.
No. Yeah.
17?
It's this one right here, 24, I think, 24.
Okay, 24, okay.
The house that it, the side of it goes up against in the other subdivision is, that particular one in the other subdivision has got a setback quite a ways. And they aren't going to have much other than, you know, it looks like it's right there at the property line almost, or at the subdivision line. And I recommend that he might want to take that one out, just so that there was no issue with that. But other than that, I don't see any problem with this at all.
Any other questions from the show? Mr. Boyce?
So during the first discussion of this ordinance, then we decided, or actually during the last one, then we decided to postpone it. Mr. Johnson decided to postpone it so that the prospector could discuss with the local residents that were upset with it and make some changes maybe based on that. Can you tell us, or anyone tell us, what discussion was made or what changes are made? Because I know I got a plethora of upset people before that, and so I'm hoping that maybe there were some resolution.
Okay. I cannot address that, but Mr. Roger Kessler is here, and maybe he can address that.
Thank you.
I ask her one question first. Mr. President?
On the light, I've seen nothing that the light was adjusted. Did that, is that documented somewhere?
Yes, there is an email that basically says there was a request put into NDOT. It was assigned to an individual, and it was noted that the traffic engineer has increased the maximum green times for the side streets. He confirmed that all detection is functioning, and if there is a vehicle demand for longer greens on side streets, they will get more green time.
Is that in our package?
And that's from the Greenfield District, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Didn't we also get an opinion from our city engineer that, that he felt there was possibly room for a left-turn lane out on 38? And he may have spoken to NDOT, I don't remember for sure, something like that.
Let me just say this, that, you know, a preliminary traffic analysis has been done, you know, in regards to this. Until they actually submit for a formal application, you know, there will be other things that maybe the state will require preliminarily. I don't think the state saw anything wrong with the traffic analysis that was done by A&amp;F Engineering. I know our city engineer had a slightly different opinion about that, but like I said, if and when they apply for a permit, you know, John will have some way in on it.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir.
Could we get Mr. Kessler in here?
Thank you. For the record, Roger Kessler with offices at 10200 Lantern Road, Fishers, Indiana. And to address the questions about what we have done regarding the residence of Settlers Mill, there were a couple of issues. One was that some of the residents had been encroaching upon the property that is owned by Mr. Effing, and we have agreed to incorporate that land as part of a landscape easement so as not to disturb the landscaping that they've been maintaining there, which is approximately 20, 25 feet onto Mr. Effing's property. And then also, those are on the further south lots on the east part of the property. And then we've also worked with the neighbors to the north of that to install evergreen trees, I believe it's every 25 feet, as a buffer between us and Sagewood. Oh, okay, that's working.
So you can maybe point out this one?
Sure. The two areas in question are right here, where you can kind of see some landscaping that's there. So we've incorporated that into our green space, and that will be part of a landscape easement, so that will not be disturbed. And then for the homeowners that were up here, we've agreed to install landscaping, evergreen trees, and a mound in between our property and their property. And then I'd not heard about Lot 24, but we'd be willing to reconfigure so that Lot 24 would no longer be there. That would give more buffer and space for the people there on the west side of Settlers Mill.
Yeah, that house is set back far enough that it's almost right on the line.
So you're committing to a 27-lot versus 28?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Kessler?
President, I've got a couple. If you could expand on or add some color to the conversations with NDOT, I'm trying to make sure I understand. The entrance in and out onto 38, is that right in, right out?
We have not.
You haven't gone that far with?
Right, we have not gone that far. As Ms. Yelton said, we have made contact, they have been responsive regarding the light at Gretna Green and 38. And, you know, we'll work with Mr. Berry and NDOT to work things out, what's best for the city.
The other question I had, the, I know from the prior meetings, there was some concern about construction traffic, and I would just want to make sure construction traffic would be coming in and off of 38 and not through the neighborhood. If you would commit to making sure that happens, that'd be terrific.
Absolutely. We'll do that, and we'll, again, work with Mr. Berry. We talked to him before about ways to block the entrance into Settlers Mill until construction was complete.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. President, I just have one comment. This intersection is also where there is a proposed, not one, but now two gas stations coming in at the corner of 30 South Harbor Drive. And I'm just saying that this is going to be an interest in a lot of people in that neighborhood, not only the gas stations, but with construction traffic all going on at the same time. I'm not sure this is the best time for this kind of stuff, just because of what's happening in that thoroughfare.
Sure. I drove by there again today, and this is actually west of that intersection.
Well, but the traffic.
Considerably.
Traffic flow will come out of that intersection 90%.
Well, some of the traffic flow will come out if it goes through that subdivision, but if NDOT says it's okay to do their own thing back there, then it won't have any impact on it, you know, unless there's somebody that decides to go through the subdivision instead of the other one. I think it, I think it ended up splitting fairly nicely, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's all projection now. I mean, just based on what the residents were saying.
Yeah.
They felt like most people would want to use the light and come through Settlers Mill to come out of this subdivision, rather than, especially if they're going to the left. It may be difficult to come out of that.
The residents think that?
Yes.
Yeah.
So your thought is if they're able to maintain a right, both a right and left and out, that ideally they're going to, they're going to go to straight up to 38, go left or right. If they were forced to a right only, then they probably would, they would have.
Yeah, then it would be, then it would be sub, obviously, sure, sure.
But the state.
And there's no way to know.
We have no control on that.
There's no way to know, because the state makes that call, so.
Any other comments, questions?
I just have a comment. As I've mentioned quite a few times, I hate whenever the Planning Commission votes down on something and don't listen to it and go directly against it, right? Back to them, and this one was an 8-1, so it wasn't just a tiny bit of a concern there. They are the ones that are doing planning and all their thoughts on it. So that's just a personal opinion. I know, Roy, you've disagreed with me multiple times, but I just feel like, why do we have a planning commission if we're not going to listen to their recommendations?
And my answer to that is that every time something like that has come up, though, we've had the conversations and thrown out ideas, and they've come back and remedied those ideas. So what is in front of us today is not what was in front of the Plan Commission. At the time, they said they voted negatively on it, and, you know, if we're never going to disagree with the Plan Commission after things have been done to remedy the problems, why do we have a city council? Just take it from the Plan Commission.
We're never going to listen to their thoughts, why do we have a planning commission?
We listen to it all the time.
Okay.
But when things, when things, when things about the projects.
I feel like the problem should be taken at the planning commission level, and they should go there.
Yeah.
You think that, you think that they should come here. It's just a disagreement, and that's fine.
No, my whole thing is, we're not voting on the same thing that the Plan Commission did. That's my whole thing. We're voting on a whole different set of deals, because they've had the conversations with the citizens, they've remedied the issues. So, you know, if you want it to go back to the Plan Commission again, so that, you know...
I mean, it has to go back to the Plan Commission.
That's what I mean, and that's, and typically, that's what we say. So if it goes back to the Plan Commission and they still say no, then it's got to come back to us anyway. So then we can go, okay, well, I guess we'll vote no then.
We have sent it back.
But this at least gives them a chance, the Plan Commission, a chance to hear the changes that have taken place, and they may drastically change their mind. They may be 8-1 the other way.
We have sent it back to the Plan Commission before without voting at this level. We've done it both ways. So, you know, in this situation, I think the developer felt like, let's continue on the path of going through the council level, and, you know, if it doesn't work, doesn't work, we'll go back to the Plan Commission. So we've done it both directions.
Yeah, but my point is, we're not voting on...
And it's really up to us. I mean, he can request it, and we've honored to go ahead.
Yeah, and that's fine. My point is, we're not voting on the same thing the Plan Commission has voted on. So to bring their judgment into play, you can't do that, because it's not the same, it's not the same situation.
And I don't know what the differences are between what they saw and what we saw, you know. But irregardless, we can debate this for another hour. Will was on the Plan Commission at the time, I think, maybe he wants to.
I was, because it was voted on last year. Can I have one more question for Ms. Yelton? Please. City Planning Department also recommends that this be approved. That's what you said there. That would be different than what the Planning Commission said. So help me understand, what's it based on? Why do you think this should go through? Is it just based on that it fits and meets all the standards, or?
Well, I guess, I guess I could look at it this way, and say if it met all the standards, it wouldn't come before you as a PD, you know? So it is, it is truly an infill project, which is something that is very hard to always, I'm going to say, adjust to, because of, most of the surrounding subdivisions were done very early on, late 80s, 90s, some in the 2000s. So what we have proposed today is not necessarily what was permitted, you know, 10 years ago, 15 years ago, whatever. Staff basically recommended, again, that this be approved for a couple, a couple of reasons. It does match, you know, what the comprehensive master plan says as far as the type of uses, the type of housing. It also basically is an infill project, which we are always looking to, you know, do those infill projects. So that's another, another item in the comp plan. It does basically seem to maintain and grow responsibly the balance of land uses. It does support a tax base. It's protecting the floodplain, because, again, you know, they're not developing in that, in that floodplain area. And again, we're encouraging residential development that reflects, I'm going to say, the surrounding character and intensity. And there is sufficient infrastructure in the area to serve those 28 or 27 lots. So it's not like we've taken a raw piece of ground and we've had to bring in infrastructure from a quarter mile away. I mean, it is all there, it is all available. So those are some of the reasons that, that staff, you know, vote to approve it. You know, it, as far as lot sizes, very compatible with what's surrounding. Zoning back in when some of those others were developed, you know, allowed smaller lot sizes. You know, I did a comparison of Settlers Mill with Sagewood. The minimum lot size in Sagewood is 9,360 square feet. Settlers Mill is 10,050 square feet. So there's not a lot of difference there. You've got a minimum lot width in Sagewood of 70 feet, the minimum lot width in Settlers Mill is 80. Again, front yards, building heights are both the same. They've got a minimum rear yard in Sagewood of 20 feet. Settlers Mill had only 15 feet. Technically, the smallest house that could be constructed in Settlers Mill is 960 square feet. The smallest house being constructed here in Sagewood is 1,800 square feet, and that's a single story. It's 2,200 for a two-story.
Any other comments, questions? Petitioner have anything else they'd like to?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, let's see, what was the number on that?
030, no.
54, yeah.
54-11-17.
54, yep. 54, yep.
It needs to be, motion needs to be to approve it as amended with the 27 instead of the 28 lots.
Okay. Make a motion to approve, oh, okay, amended. Motion to amend ordinance number 541117 to include 27 home sites rather than 28.
Motion is second to amend ordinance 541117 from 28 home sites to 27. That's a hand vote?
Yeah.
All those in favor? Motion carries, 7-0.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 541117 as amended.
We have a motion in the second to approve 541117 as amended. That'll be a roll call vote. Ms. Thompson?
Mr. Boyce?
Nay.
Mr. Hampton?
Nay.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Rowland?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Air?
Aye.
We have a motion regarding ordinance 551117.
Mr. President, I had one question before we do that, if the petitioner would be so kind. Section 12B speaks on fences. This is black metal, vinyl, or wood. I don't know, Joyce Anne, on the vinyl side, I suppose that's a permitted material for fencing, if I recall correctly, but I don't.
Is that actually vinyl, or is it the PVC kind of stuff?
That is correct.
It is.
It is a permitted.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know, thanks.
Do we have a motion?
So, but do we need to amend this one as well to reflect the 27 lots versus the 28 lots? So I would make a motion that we amend ordinance number 55-11-17 to reflect the 27 lots versus the 28 lots.
We have a motion to amend 5511-17 from 28 lots to 27 lots. All those approving. Motion carries, 7-0.
Motion to approve ordinance number 551117 as amended.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to approve ordinance 55-11-17. That'll be a roll call vote. Ms. Thompson?
Mr. Boyce? Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Rowland?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Air?
Aye.
Ordinance passes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, I think that takes care of all the business for this evening. Do we have any council comments? Mr. Boyce?
I just want to say, I totally agree that it is a different one. I didn't want to bring this up during this, because I'm not saying they did this, this particular development did this, but I've brought up it quite a few times. I feel like we have some developers that don't care about the Planning Commission, and they just get it through to us, and then they do the bare minimum and keep changing things and bring it to us multiple times until we pass it. This only came to us twice, so I'm not saying this one did it, that's why I'm bringing it up now. But when we continue to do that, then we're getting the bare minimum that is required, and I just don't see Noblesville as a bare minimum one. Even though we are voting on something that was not the same as the, as the Planning Commission voted on, it still is, in some cases, the bare minimum that passes, and that's not what I want to see for our community.
Like I say, I think this, we've done it both directions, and I do have to agree. I don't want them to keep coming back and coming back.
Absolutely.
Normally, if it's not a good project after the first two times, it's not a good project.
We're all on the same page there, I think.
I have a real quick comment. Mr. Jensen is not here this evening. He is out in Washington DC with his job. I know that he and the mayor talked, and, and the mayor asked him, well, hey, if you're going to be out there, will you try to give us a little bit of money for some roads? So hopefully, he's doing that, I'm not sure, but.
And he's out there recommending, they have clients there, but then the commissioners are also out there for the benefit of having the county to bring back some improvements, green improvement.
So let's wish him luck on bringing some suitcase full of money back from Washington.
Absolutely.
Ms. Wiles?
I would just like to echo on the mayor's comments about Elsie Olvey's open house. He did a proclamation, and yesterday was her actual 100th birthday, and so he proclaimed that Monday, March 13, March 12, was Elsie Olvey Day. And I have grown up with Elsie Olvey, and she is an amazing woman, and how she looks and acts and interacts with people at 100 years old is amazing, and, boy, I hope that someday I can get close to that. Happy birthday, Elsie.
We have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.